You gotta see your smiling faces first, there you go.
Okay, smile, alrighty. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda and make sure there's no conflicts of interest or anything on the agenda that you don't approve of? Otherwise, we consider the agenda approved. Our auditor, please read the minutes from our previous meeting.
May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM. With Gene Hyden Chair Presiding, Members Present, were Schultz, Dozart, Hyden, Mulbauer, and Rossberg. Minutes of their previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The Board approved the hiring of Evan Tannick, Seasonal Attendant at Nelson Park. And Madeline Parrott, Seasonal Attendant at Yellow Smoke Park Conservation Department. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart, to approve the notice of public hearing and publication thereof related to the classification of a portion of K. Avenue, beginning at twenty seven twelve K Avenue and running. Fence southeast approximately nine hundred and forty feet to the end of K Avenue. As established by petition number five five eight. Said road generally lying in the northwest quarter, northwest quarter of section twenty five eighty four thirty nine. The date was set for June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at ten AM, a motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to approve the temporary credit limit increase to ten thousand. Ten thousand dollars to the baby boutique account through August thirty first, twenty twenty four, motion. Passed unanimously, a motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rossberg. To approve tax abatement. For twenty five fifty seven Donna Reed Road, Michael. And Sarah Luft, new home, motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart, to approve liquor licy, pending gram shop. For the bake shop in Hollywood Cafe, motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Rossberg, to approve. The Chair approving the Chair's authority to sign the sales agreement of the annex building at one oh five North Main Street. Motion passed unanimously. At ten thirty AM, a motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Rossberg, to open closed session of the discussion of the hazardous pipeline ordinance. Soil restoration ordinance and potential litigation per Iowa Code twenty one point five subsection one subsection C. Motion passed unanimously at eleven forty four AM, a motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Mulbauer to close the closed session. Motion passed unanimously, the Board discussed the hazard pipeline. Ordinance, soil restoration ordinance, no action was taken at this time, on motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned eleven forty seven AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available to courthouse on Friday four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Yeah, sounded pretty good.
Sounded real good, thank you. Alrighty.
Whoa, sorry. Electrol this time.
And the election's elected there.
Getting ready, yes it is.
That's up, it's been elected.
It's been elected. Alrighty, we have next the standing reports of the Supervisors, anybody wanna volunteer to go first?
I'll go first, if I go.
Dave, we'll let you go, how's that?
I'll run it up to the bar.
I need just a few minutes.
I talked to Henry Thompson this morning on my way here for a little while and he was. Forming me on gravel hall and he thought that it was going really, really soon.
He's one of our boy, man, in the vanilla shop.
And like he said that they had twenty five trucks running and. Just getting a lot done, I thought the material looked good and just thought that things were going very well. It's kinda nice to hear from the guys on the ground then. And I'll, no, I still pause, sorry, I'll come up and give something to you about it, but. You know.
They've covered a lot of ground around charter road there, they're just. Week because they've been out of.
Yeah, so they were getting. Product out of Willie and he was this morning down in my area, down in my ass.
Oh. A little safer around charter road then, they're going that way, huh? That's crazy that many trucks.
Oh, I get.
Lot of extra traffic on there.
Getting a lot done in a hurry though, I think.
Yep.
Did.
And good time of year, probably, the past week, didn't get to wake some of them.
And now it's, we don't get any more gully washers, you're walking all into the day.
That's what I'll add you.
Okay, okay, I'll go real quick, um, I did have a early childhood, you know, business at Crawford meeting, uh, this is doing. Uh, lasted the longest meeting I've ever had because, um. The budget is just not there and so the Board had these decisions to make whether they were gonna fund a program in B B or one in Crawford, kind of that both did the same. Same, uh, programs facilitated, uh, much discussion on that and then it finally came down to, uh, recommendation. That would stay with the, uh, entity that has been doing it, proven support, it's the three hundred fifty some thousand dollar program. That they're gonna work more together, but Crawford did get that. And I also yesterday went to the Aryan, uh, uh, City Council meeting. I've been getting these phone calls from, you know, this dirt that's coming into the homes on Catherine Street from that, uh, property above. What had happened is they'd taken out these trees, the, a new owner, uh, and they took, took out the trees, which is causing that soil to. I, I showed you the video, um, so. Paul is going to be going down there to dig up the ditches, look at the culvert, you know, part of that problem is the railroads and so. What they're looking for is maybe some grants to help them do some, uh, work and I was told that there was gonna be a gal there. And had some ideas about some grants and she unfortunately had another commitment and I didn't find out about it until after I was down there. But I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, I'm, I'm happy that our county engineer is agreed to go down there and kinda help out a little bit, you know, that's, uh. That's something that's really helping out.
Did they get an R C S involved?
Uh, they are doing everything they can and this, there's a gal from downtown city, I can't think of her name right off the top of my head.
Billy.
Billy, okay, Wilson?
Yes.
Uh, so they're gonna work together with that, but I just think. Until we figure out what's causing it, the gal that's, and everybody, there's more than just this one person that has to handle. Uh, they can't really go in there and fix them back up, they're just sitting in limbo waiting on the one property's a rental and. She had her rented when it's got mud. On the floors.
Whatever you're cleaning up.
Yeah, whatever.
Really, you just wanna hack it out.
Right, well, and the other part, well, the other part of it is, is I guess the farmer had planted some rye and bromin things, but with the gully washer, all that, you know, came out, so. The good news is that he's aware of the problem, doing what he can to, you know, kind of fix it now, kind of working together, but if anybody knows of any grants or anything that's out there. To, uh, help them, uh, get to stabilize that, you know, so, and other than that.
Can I fly through the. Because our, our county declared a disaster, get that five thousand dollars?
Well, that is for the actual, uh, rainstorm and they didn't include that, you know, so I think that that's pretty specific to that.
It is.
Yeah, that's, I understand anyway, but.
Yeah, but we, there's some monies that were available to us for washing the roads and stuff even, so.
But that was through that incident, so.
Right.
We'll ask Paul when he gets here.
I think it was all the same day, so.
Spitballing.
Yeah, I'm just.
Spitballing, yeah, I, I thought of that, that's kind of what I'd gotten back, uh, but maybe it's just asking the right person, the right question at the right time, so. Just wanted to bring that up, that area is struggling a little bit to kind of hold on there and. I had never been to an area of city council meeting, so I thought that would be a place to go. And it was interesting. That's all I have.
I'm trying to find out when the area has it.
Oh, because I had talked to the mayor of, uh, Aryan.
They're posted anywhere, maybe.
Not that I knew of, and I didn't really know what street it was gonna be on, but I just figured the property that had at least two or more cars in it.
There's only a few to choose from, but.
Maybe on the Pecan.
Yeah, it was okay.
Did they talk about their budget or their?
Yes, they did, they're gonna give that to you before June fifteenth, promise.
Yes, I don't know if it's gonna matter. But they need to finish their stuff, I mean.
Yeah, um.
I don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, they did test the on-ramp, that did come up.
And children served.
Yeah. And their financial report too.
What would, what would they use the grant money for?
Stabilization somehow, uh, both, I would, I would think just.
So in this private property, landowners.
It affects the whole county, I mean, because it came all the way down, you know, all of the streets and it's, uh.
So it's more than one landowner, where it's.
More than one landlord, more than one landlord, absolutely.
That's where they wanna go fix it.
But it's just, it's just the. Landowners. Recent modifications that are creating the biggest disturbances, my opinion.
So they don't need any input from the railroad to fix the problem?
Yeah, that was brought up, that part of that, when I talked to Paul, you know, the railroad has a part in this, but.
Drainage is probably the biggest part with the railroad, you know how they are about.
They, they cleaned it out once, but they didn't address the whole problem and so that, uh, it's a combination of different things, I think, it's not all just one.
Yeah.
One, uh, it's just, uh, the fact that. That all, that rain came so fast and had it been, you know, uh, if that. Seeds would've got planted last year when there was kind of a drought, well, probably would've been a stop.
I'll try to get you a name.
You do that, see that's why I bring it up. Yep, that's just, let's just keep working together, that's a little.
This sounds to me like the biggest problem was that where he did improvements on his field.
Yep.
It actually removed it, but with equivalent, kind of equivocated to it. That's pretty much.
Pretty much, but, uh, according to the mayor of Aryan, you know, that landowner is aware, he is trying to, you know, they can't, it's not that. It just, just so happened that we got.
The fair minded first, I'm sure it's that, that.
Uh, just a bunch of circumstances beyond everybody's control, which is causing, because even on that flat. Street, right when you come in, there's still twigs and, you know, debris and things that just, uh. So it's not, it kinda just keeps coming, it doesn't stop there, it kinda keeps coming, it's coming. I just, that's all I really had, so. There you go. Alright, Kyle, you wanna go next, we'll just go right down the line.
Well, I will take long, uh, conservation board meeting tomorrow night at Nelson's Park. Annual Nelson's Park, so. We have overlooked the upgrades that will be done. Come this fall, they're, they're gambling, they're gambling season, but. Uh. I think there's really anything else on the agenda, the normal business, uh. And, uh, last week, just gonna heads up, Nate will probably be in and talk about it more in depth, but we'll have a very lengthy bill. From one of our juveniles, so. It's gonna be better to talk to me. The budget should be alright to cover it. Why I said it's gonna have to be alright, because we can't get it done, we can't give an amendment down this anymore, this, this fiscal year, so.
Well, it depends on when we can get the bill, to ask whether we get paid in this fiscal year or then it's stopped.
So I just thought everybody be aware of that, but, you know. And it's probably gonna be. Knowing the situation if I can, ongoing. Expand.
Long term stay.
I don't see it getting.
Oh.
Early release, I guess, I don't know, yeah, the behavior.
Yeah, you know what? Our cost is gonna be or what that cost is right now?
I received a phone call from Cheryl. And Nate both, I forget, was it last Wednesday night?
Yeah, he reached out to me, I gave him your cell phone, he said, I need to talk to Kyle.
Yep, and both of them, hey, Nate's was after ten, ten thirty, so. It's must be big enough that it was concerning to call me that late at night, so. Cheryl said it's gonna be large.
How long's it been, how long?
This was all just transpiring last week, so.
Oh.
There's hospital involved in it and.
Got it.
So, like I said, we probably won't even get the bill until next fiscal year, I'm guessing. So.
Over a hundred grand, less than a hundred?
I'm, I'm, I'm hoping less than thirty, thirty though.
Oh, okay.
But still, that's a lot, that's a big number, you know, the pension budget, so.
Now, when you, when you say that they called you like at ten thirty at night, that means that that incident had just happened, possibly.
It was still happening, yeah.
Still happening, and so they needed to transport him. Then it.
Well, they trans, the transport had already been done.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then they anticipate because of the nature of the. Nation.
Just everything that's going on. It's not, our juvenile, the tension bill will be larger. Per se, it's not like we're getting charged extra because of this, it's just the hospital bills and everything that are gonna be. Reach up with it.
Alrighty.
I don't know, I don't, Nate, I don't, I said. I mean, thanks for calling, you don't have to, it is what it is, I know there's nothing we can do to change it.
Right, exactly.
Well, we mentioned that even with Glenn before Nate, where. You know, a couple of years in a row there, that we were over budget just because of all the cases or incidents.
But, I mean, they gotta do what they have to do, I mean, they got protocol to follow and I know Nate was trying. And Cheryl were trying many different avenues, but everything always had the fingers pointing back to Crawford County, so. We're stuck with it.
Would you like to read through that, that it didn't actually happen in Crawford County?
Did it happen in Crawford County, that's a Crawford County kid.
Is it Crawford County, shit, okay. Alright, just kind of talking code, yes. He's innocent.
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you Kyle. Hi, I don't know if you've got thirty minutes, Mike.
Well, I don't know if I got that, Mike.
We can always, we can always, we can always.
We can always take a tiny break.
Always jump ahead.
I know fifteen, he's waving over here.
I mean, I, I've got three minutes, okay, man.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're gonna decide labs.
Go.
But I haven't gotta go, yes. So, I, 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 I'll forget my four. Six more months. Um, just to let everyone know, I guess, the twenty eight E Board, uh, with us, city, school. Uh, that Mike Hardon and Scott Larson, it was their last meeting last Tuesday. That the new business manager and the new superintendent are gonna serve on the board. Uh, Mike is gonna bring the superintendent by perhaps, new superintendent by over the next month, he said, I might just come up on a Tuesday, I said, hey, we're here for Tuesday, if you just wanna introduce her, we don't have her on the agenda. Uh, he said, we'll do that if I know what day I'm coming, said, I'll let you know, we can be on the agenda, but, uh.
Do they have a new business manager also?
Yes. They do. She was the business manager in May previously.
Okay, very nice.
And, uh.
And Don Meyer?
Don, you said?
Don Meyer. No. Business manager for the.
School.
For the school. Don City.
Okay, business manager for Manning School District. She left previously. Um. They elected me president of that twenty eighty board last.
Congratulations.
Tuesday.
They did what?
They elected the president of the twenty eighty board, because the city. Manager serving the secretary as secretary and the business manager, the business manager is serving as the treasurer, so that I thought since we have the city. The school, the county needs to be involved, so the only office left was president, so there you go.
You're self-reliant, I might have had that.
You'll do fabulous.
I just wanted you all to be aware of that and then just a couple of. Things that I think you ought to be, just from reading about, about, about our, our county, is, uh, December thirty first nineteen seventy nine. They terminated livestock operations at the county farm. Uh, July nineteenth nineteen eighty eight, they officially named the road Donna Reed Road, in case you're interested. And the first lease of the county farm was December twenty seventh nineteen eighty nine. At a cost of eighty five dollars.
Is who leased it?
Jim, Ron and Jim Reiser.
Oh.
Really?
They rented a hundred sixty five acres back there.
Oh, for the therapy?
You are officially our historian.
Just wanted you guys to know, okay, Ty, you're a board, or board historian.
Thank you.
Cool.
I'm a president, board historian, you need to get titles, other types.
You know, that would be, you know, on the. The make, the press or whatever, they have a looking back section of the paper.
Twenty five years ago and.
You could have a newsletter, correct?
Careful, you dug yourself into it.
I thought I was just providing fun facts.
You are, and I appreciate it. Interesting. Okay, well, the first thing, I didn't have much of all last week, other than running around, taking care of business, but, uh. The, uh. Yesterday, we had our, one of our reservoir meetings.
Yeah.
And, and it was, uh. A good one, because we, uh, got our water needs study and he did, he didn't bring out, he emailed the more in-depth version. Uh, but I sent you guys a copy, uh. Jerry made a copy of this this morning and sent it to you guys, so you can go through it, because I wanted you to have the color. I'll kinda get into that here in a minute, but, uh. Obviously, our needs are gonna be growing as the years come, the Anderson's growing, our smaller towns. Are. I wouldn't say they're shrinking a lot, but they're, they're, they're trending down, but that's because of your smaller, you know, your really small communities, Aspen Mall and. Buck Grover, below a hundred. Ricketts is a hundred and seven, I think, well, that's in here, you guys can look all those small details up if you'd like. But, uh. It still has us on an increase for water needs and. Uh, there's, there's. If you, you know, th- th- this was specifically towards what Joe kinda geared him towards, you know, what he wanted him to look into. Um, you can get into more of the hypothetical industrial developments, you know, like where he would actually sit down with. Uh, if Smith fields and see about what their long-term plans are, that whatever you can get out of them, you know, private businesses and. That's sometimes, uh, held close to their best, but. The, uh. You know, the Monograms and Petersons and any expansions they might have for those that, that use water, I mean, and. The, uh, and then also work with CDC, seeing what they're up to, uh, what other kind of plans are in the county for. Industrial parks, I actually kinda like to see, obviously, an industrial park up here. And, uh, that's one of the things that, uh, we're moving towards, but the, uh, I'd also like to see help, uh. Advance one up in Sluswig and down in Manila as well, and the other two communities that are. Still pretty active in the forward march, I suppose, if you could put it.
Would you get a definitive answer on how much water usage Summit would use when you met with him?
Yeah, they brought it up, and here's something, you know, I mean, obviously, each side has their story to that, you know, and. Uh. And they really didn't give an exact amount, because they said really all they use the water for, now the, the, what. Anderson's uses the water for and what Summit will use water for are two different things, that means obviously Anderson uses it to process the corn and stuff like that, but, uh. Summit, really, the only time they use water is when they first complete the pipe. And they use it for pressure testing, to look for leaks and everything like that, so after that, water doesn't get put into the line anymore and, and, you know. I'm sure somebody's got a rebuttal for that, now that I've said it, I'll hear it, but, uh. They said if there's actually, I can't, I'm sitting here trying to remember, Dave, I didn't say it, but they call, there's some kind of an acid. Type reaction inside there that corrodes the pipe, so they won't put water in there. And in the, in the combination with the carbon, I can't remember what the term.
It's not like they're gonna use it.
Yeah, they're not gonna be pumping water to North Dakota like what we're, at least, that's what I've been into, you know, I mean, I gotta take everybody at face value, you know, I mean. For what, other than what research we can dig into that.
Carbonic gas.
Thank you, carbonic gas, that's right.
Greenie, regular blog.
Yep. Google makes us so much brighter than we're as children. But in any event, uh. Uh, that, I don't see them having a major need for water, so, I mean. However, if we, uh, be- because of this, you know, it obviously starts to meet the criteria of. Of green energy or, you know, makes renewable fuels more viable, which could increase, I, I, I. Don't know what Anderson's plans are in the future, but, uh. You know, assuming that this would make them more viable by, you know, my byproduct, you know. Potentials for their ethanol to be used, even other facilities being out, you know, used, whether even Anderson would create. A sustainable aviation fuel, and I mean, this is all hypothesis, I haven't talked to anybody there, so don't take it as I know something inside, because I do not. But, uh. You know, that's just the possibilities of, of my development, my saying, alright, these are the things that can happen. You know, so would that increase water, water demand, of course, you know, I mean, any new businesses get the potential. And if we stay in our, in our development cluster, we're gonna stay ag oriented, well, ag usually uses a fair amount of water, no matter what they're doing, you know. Now, I don't mean we're gonna build more packing houses, you know, I mean, that's. You know, we gotta just make sure that we look after the ones that we got and create another one right now with the population count we got and the workforce we got would be kinda. I don't know if it, I would say irresponsible, but it would, it would sure put a strain on, on our current workforce, you know, our current employers. And, uh, but, you know, you're always shopping for the best opportunities for the community, so water needs on, on that hasn't been really in this part of the study on, on development wise, so. But that's, that's for another day.
You don't tell how much our water needs dropped, like once Tyson left?
You know, if you look at these graphs in here, it doesn't look like it did.
Doesn't look like it changed.
Yeah, it really looked like it.
You know, it'd be interesting to go back when they still had the high point, because they used a lot of.
A lot of water there.
Lot of water then, but they had their own wells, so the D M U probably would maybe been able to.
Well, hard to track it, hard to track it, plus Tyson gives you the numbers. I would sue, you know, you're gonna have some good on, I mean, I, I remember, you know, Dad was obviously with Iowa B, you know, and he was a management and that. One of the, one of his big projects from time when I was like in junior high, I remember he sat at the dining room table. Many nights, working on different plans, creating ways to reduce their water use and. It got down to like six hundred and fifty gallons. Per head for production purposes, when it was probably over a thousand. So, I mean, di- different things like that, I, I mean, I'm just hypo, this is all hypothetical. And the only reason I have numbers in my head is because I was actually speaking with her husband about it the other, not too long ago, when we were talking about water usage and stuff like that, and Jerry obviously worked for. I B P, so he knew a lot of those things too, so that's why that number is in my head, so. And I, otherwise, I don't think I'd remember back to junior high, for sure, but, uh, the, uh. I mean, it. Things like that obviously have helped us, so if you gotta, you gotta assume that if I B P was doing that, and it's obviously financial interest, using water costs money. Even if you have your own wells, but the, uh. You know, you still have wastewater to deal with and treat, all them types of things, so, I mean, I would assume that the Smithfield or farmland in the day was already doing ways to conserve water, so, and I'm sure they still are. But, uh. If you go through all this, uh, he, he talks about the, the thirteen cities and they went over everything in water usage, a lot of it was working with rural water, D M U. And to get, to get a. The best assessment, I think it's Deloitte and. That use their, that still have their own water supply. Oh, maybe it wasn't, I, I'm not scrolling through here, I'll be able to tell you. Uh, I know Deloitte, I'd come to my mind, because I knew they were having some issues with well and waters, but I think they've got that fixed out and they've got their nitrates down and stuff, so they might be staying on their own. But if you get, as you're scrolling through, you get to this first map, kinda looks like this. It shows the Crawford County is outlined in there, orange, and that's showing rural waters lines, and the darker blue is their heavier line, I think that was like a ten plus, maybe twelve and fourteen. Size pipe, and then the light blue was the next size down, maybe like the eight, eight to ten or six to eight. And then it was the green or a little smaller than that, then where you're basically your. Small arteries, or not arteries, the bigger ones are your arteries, you know, and your capillary veins, I suppose, that would be a good way to put it. But, uh, if you look, the southwest corner of our county is dreadfully underserved, now, there is another. Rural water that comes down up in there in Harrison County and stuff, but. But, uh. That was why we were having trouble when we were shopping for water for our other park, you know, for Nelson's. You know, there's just nothing there and that's why it would cost so much to get water to, and we actually discussed that a little bit yesterday too, because that's. Still something I would, I'm sure that anybody in this board would like to see us get water to that eventually, and. You know, it's it's obviously caused cost in effect. I mean, what they're gonna, there's so many, there's so few people down in that neighborhood. It's hard to justify running pipes to that, you know. So that seems to be a larger part of the problem. And you look, there is absolutely nothing. If you look just north of north to the west of Dallas City, there's just nothing down there. For pipes. So, I mean, there would.
There's not a lot of people out.
That's it. There's just not. I mean, so it's hard to justify.
Little township. There's.
There's nothing. I mean, there's people that matter, people that live there matter, obviously, but there's so few of them that it's hard to justify the expense of putting all that pipe.
Skirts the cost.
So maybe that's something we always do is keep an eye out. And I know I'll do that. I'm sure you've got going down there to State House, but. Always keep an eye out for any water improvements to our rural type that that, you know, like. The fiber optic people have been getting a lot of money to get out to the rural area, which is a great thing. But maybe someday that water supply and need, you know, might be a thing, especially the thing is is. Like more of the confinements have been going to rural water. But a lot of them are just using it for backup, so it's still hard for them to justify because the cost is not, they're not getting, retrieving the cost of putting in the pipe. So that's. You know, like if the cattle confinement start to get more popular, which is my hope anyway. But. You know, that that could be another reason to have more rural water because if you got your concentration like that, you know, and you don't want to risk that one well, you want to have a backup.
Rural wasn't adding anymore, wasn't taking on anymore. Yeah. Findings. Now that. Got some rains again, that might change.
And there and 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 I will say that the rural water down there. Is in Manning, you know, our rural water, Western, Western Iowa, they are or West Central Service Area. They're they're looking at drilling another. Water site, you know, up to the north here that will actually help. Kind of. Feed the.
North of Manning?
No, it's up there.
North.
Well, I should, it's up in the wall like.
Not in Crump.
Yeah, no, no, it's not in there, but I mean, it reduces the load on everywhere. In Manning area reduces load on our our DMU so that, you know, maybe that provides opportunity. To go elsewhere. If the if the water, you know, you gotta have the water supply, and then that's another reason for the reservoir. You know, I mean, the reservoir serves, that's the idea of this, is it serves multiple purposes. It isn't just the water needs. You know, I mean, it's also for flood mitigation, but it's also for water need. Like you said, they weren't taking anymore because of water concerns for confinement. Well, I mean. It's what we do here is grow stock. So anyway, and then they go through the historical, you know, they showed it where the historical population was. Like I said, there was, we were down in the. Actually, we're down in the ninety seven was what the area has dropped to. They were at a hundred and eight to twenty ten. Buckgrove and Aston Mall are thirty three and thirty four. And.
Same type, Kyle mentioned that Tyson, I think you said that they had their own wells. Is there, since they're no longer, I mean, I know they still own the facility, but I mean, is is that a. Future potential of adding water to the system by. Purchasing those, you know, purchasing those wells from Tyson and put them into the. Systems of either Dennis or Crawford County or the West Central.
I, you know, and. DMU has got some wells over that way, and I don't know how that's, you know, if they're ever tied into that aquifer type thing or not, you know, I mean. They were talking about, I think. That might have been Deloitte or something.
Craig, I think the biggest hurdle is getting Tyson to do anything.
Right, right.
I'm trying not to say a whole lot about Tyson right now, okay? There's other activity going on there, too. But. So, I mean. Yeah, there's there's challenges to deal with there. You know, and it's not that they're impossible to get along with. It's just they've got their interests as well, you know. But anyway, goes down, shows the population, then it's got this population chart down here and the trends. And obviously, Denison's our grower, you know, I mean, and there's a dark blue line on there. That shows where its growth is and then the county itself, but then the the other urbans are dropping, you know, and that's our small communities. But it is, they aren't dropping significant. And they've got a slight decline, but it's.
Looking at the population, it was pretty steady since nineteen seventy. It's just the shifting of where the women.
Exactly. And it's exactly what it is, and that's exactly what what he called it is just a population shift, but that's just basically the entire nation. You know, we're moving to a more urbanized society.
Yeah.
Which.
Well. Well, ours continue to get bigger, I mean.
As a kid growing up, where all of your neighbors lived and.
Yeah, you could walk down that gravel to play with your buddies. They aren't there anymore. Yeah.
You gotta walk a long time.
I gotta walk a long time, which is probably keeping you in good shape. After you get toward that, I forget that.
Guys gotta come down our road.
Yours are too hilly, sorry.
We got kids up and down the road all over.
I bet you do.
Yeah, you do.
They're on horses, though.
Yeah, well, I never change.
This, anyway, historic water usage, you kind of went over that. As you can see, I'm gonna, these letters are a little smaller and. Get out with cheaters. As you can see, you know, it shows you on that graph down here at the bottom, that's. The gallons per.
Are you on this branch?
Gallons per capita per day.
There you go, gallons per capita per day.
Okay.
And that's the usage in each community. With the with their sanitary surveys, okay? And you can see a lot of it has to do with where the droughts are. You know, I mean, if you look at that, where the drought might push the water usage up. Obviously, that's got to do with either irrigation type things or. Or. People watering their lawns. Filling pools, just different things. When it's hot and. You know, it's something you don't really think about, like Charter Oak's got an outdoor pool. When it's hot, it gets a lot of evaporation, so there's a there's a adding that continuously goes into a pool like that throughout the summer and stuff. And that's just one thing, friends, yeah.
Do we know what year IBP was just essentially?
Two thousand eighteen.
Let's try and leave on this. Is it look like in two thousand fourteen is when it went down just to cash.
So that's no.
I don't know.
Just, just.
Right, I don't remember.
Came to my mind.
Google that yet?
I'm working on it.
Okay.
I can tell you bread butter.
He's trying to steal your job, Greg. Anyway. So there there it shows that there's, it really, you know, other than some spikes here and there for different communities. I mean, it's it's kind of a consistent water usage, you know.
Right, I mean, you can see that every community is basically the same other than Denison, which has.
Which is commercial. And and that's what I was gonna lead to is because it's the one that's growing. The largest, its usage is increased.
Twenty fifteen?
Twenty fifteen, so.
So twenty fourteen is when we put our, oh, that's not it. Singing bail prior to closing pool here, that's.
And then they went into the projected water usage, you know, knowing the population projection per gallons and peaking. Estimated future average per day peak, all right. See, they got the peak days and then they got these average days figured out in this chart here. And it goes through twenty to twenty forty five, and this is their projections and. They got a formula right down. You got a formula that they use to figures that out. I don't have my script paper that I'm scribbling on, so.
Something like we need to do some education. Three hundred and sixty five gallons of water per day per person. Seems like awful. I mean, it's spread out over total usage, but. They need my dad in there. You know, he run all the water down there, you know, he used to carry it in with a bucket, yet so he very conservative on water.
I mean, how much Smithfield monogram Andersons use.
Exactly.
Because it's pretty consistent how much people use in those small communities.
Yeah, the the people usage is pretty consistent. It's. It's the biggest thing is that the the plant is spread across what they say the, see, they use. In the in the city of Denison is per capita population, per person. But when but when they go out to the outside, it's per unit, so it'd be like your farm place or a household, you know, so. The smaller ones were figured that way. And he said it would just give you a better a better estimate of what was going on. But they spread it across the population, but that didn't just mean per person, you know, it's.
I understand, I mean, I take every water leak, every. Everything that, you know, could be in use. Every fire that took down the, when they use a million gallons of water at a fire, I mean, that's all figured into that, but.
Didn't think about that.
Yeah.
They said they set up the city. They drain their pool for the summer, they use that water to irrigate their football field.
Good for them.
Kind of a neat way to reuse or get extra use out of it.
You know, that's actually what some of the things that I was looking at in ankle, that was some of the things they were talking about, way to reuse it, your wastewater. We don't do a very good job doing that collectively.
They asked, did you reuse their wastewater how many times?
And you and we and they by golly should, they're in control. But anyway, it went through there and showed the growth, which is actually a substantial, you know, it it brought. The numbers, you know, that we're gonna need significant water, and this is what using our, how we are, how we're built right now. So, I mean, if we have. Any. Anywhere for, you know, moderate growth, we're 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 probably gonna need a lot more water than that, you know. So I think this, it the whole the whole thing is really demonstrating the need for them. You know, for the reservoir without. Even going into the. Using development as a as a guideline, you know, just using the numbers that we presently have. And figuring out what their potential, like we showed over the smaller areas where they're going down, Denison going up. Connection to history. Rural, West Central rural users, you know, I mean, it. I want to really, I don't want to say this on a round turn here. West Central's been been averaging a twenty nine users per year, adding that much, twenty nine per year for their existing services. So that's why they've lost, they've been looking for additional places to go because users doesn't necessarily mean a family, you know. Get a question?
I just, did they talk about, they have. Populations stayed the same. They're adding more people on theirs, but did they talk about the total aquifer? I mean, it's like. Is it a shell game where? You know, you're you shut your well down, but the water's still in the same aquifer, so it's the total gallons being used. Would be the same. Right, it's interesting. Did they talk about that at all? I mean.
No, I mean, you mean as far as where they're drawing the water.
Just all the water under the footprint of the county is X. And we don't want to see your well and the water's coming over here. Is it the same aquifer that? I just, I closed my well, but I hooked the rural water, so really the total gallons is still the same.
Yeah, no, because, you know, we're using a lot, they're rural, West Central in particular. I mean, this study was beyond just Crawford County. Okay, we were.
I get that, but I'm just curious on how the whole, if they. You took, hey, on the. Western side of the county, that water is not anywhere tied to. The Booty River area, you know.
Yeah.
To where or there's, I'm sure there's a geologist that's saying, you know, it's all in the same water.
Aquifer.
Aquifer.
Yeah. And 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 I I did, I don't get the vibe, and this is just talking to DMU that. Not necessarily all the wells connected. You know, like we think of a, like the, you know, if you think of the Ogallala Aquifer, you know, it starts up in in basically up in South Dakota and stretches Texas, you know. It isn't like we've got this, that we're drawing all of our water on something like that. You know, I mean, sounded to me like some of our wells aren't even, you know, like if they, the wells that are south of Denison, I don't know that, I don't know necessarily if that's. Pulling out of the same pool underneath the.
I guess that's what I was asking if they.
You know, actually. That's that's not a question that I'd really beat him on yet. That's a good question. I mean, I have asked about, when I use the word aquifer, they never stop me from using.
Because they, didn't they have a map when? And I see a map where like there's an aquifer that extends from the Great Lakes all the way. It's like the guys in the river bottom that they say they'll never run out of water. Over by Otto because that aquifer is all the way from the Great Lakes.
Yeah.
So. Just curious.
I don't know. I have to, I mean, obviously, there's times when your well is going dry, you go deeper. So I don't know if there's something that we can go deeper to that's got more water and.
Some, is there surface? Aquifers and then deep aquifers?
Deep well aquifer.
I think there is so that too, because what? Once you get so deep, you start getting a higher sulfur stuff content of water, so. That's where.
I never went into that, you know what, though? I was trying to remember back when we had that geologist there. He talked more about that.
Mm hmm.
It's water tables and what's there at, you know, from when the glacier, you know, the glaciers came down. And where they all met actually was in the Lakeview and Mall Lake area.
That's kind of where the glaciers kind of came to.
They all came to a point there.
Good job, Ty. Forty five minutes.
I didn't even get done. It took up all my time.
He was, he was doing his best to fill some some time.
Thanks for being.
Gone.
We actually had a daddy couldn't do it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
How much money getting told? I get it all in.
You did excellent, Ty. Thank you very much. All right, Paul, you are on. Thank you. I'll take this one.
Anyway, you can go through that if you get more questions and if I can't answer.
I think we will. I had some questions.
What a really big day today. It's been so, I used to say. Got a really good show. Oh, like I said, that, well, they're probably doing, they're doing it right now, setting a temporary bridge, so I'll soon as I get down here, my head over there, see how that's going, so. Kind of neat to see. And of course, there's lectures to make. Is there?
It's today.
So hopefully lots of people. So. The. I did two there, the project, we're gonna have that pre-con tomorrow, so we'll find out a little bit better, but they could possibly start next week. We'll find out more there. Manella shop continues to. Work on the electrical and heating and everything's looking really good there.
Heating and plumbing. That's really.
With, yeah. It's better than a tent.
It does look really nicer.
It does. We get all done, it's gonna, yeah, that's gonna be a nice. Nice improvement, nice addition to the community and and to our our facilities, so. Pretty moved to see that come together. Great crew there on three sixtieth street. Just don't get avenue, they they did an avenue from three sixtieth back to the highway and. Just kind of move one around the corner and working on that. Soon as they get down there, they're gonna go south on fifty nine. You know, where Von Tersch is right there, that Level B road going east of there, so they're gonna go next, so.
I was on that a while back. That's pretty rough.
It is, yeah, it could use a little improvement, so. In our in our level B roads right now, don't look very good. It's just been a struggle to get onto them, you know, and the guys say you get halfway in there and then it's mud and you just, you know, we need a week of dry weather to get. To get them so you can actually get on them, but we'll we'll get them fixed up.
Can I talk to more thunderstorms this afternoon?
Mm hmm, yeah. So. The bridge group, they're they're working on that, that project, I think in two, three weeks we'll be out of there, so it's gonna go really, really fast. Roadside seeding and spraying, we're trying a little different mulch. I got thirteen bags of a different paper fiber mulch, trying to shop around a little bit, see if we can find something a little less expensive. The stuff's gone up quite a bit. We buy a premium paper mulch, it works good, everything works really good, it's just. Got more expensive, so trying to figure out if there's another product out there that we can maybe, and we're gonna try to buy semi loads and just have them drop ship it right yard to yard. So that'll save us two or three bucks at that.
I was at a graduation sale Saturday night and I talked to a couple of city council members and just some of the people there, and they're just so tickled pink with their overlay.
It turned out good?
It turned out good, and they said our biggest mistake was we didn't do more.
I know. We were over there doing that, John Leibler, we're gonna do a whole town, you know. Honestly, you know, we had a good contract, everything just kind of fit together and they're low, they were here, so you get a. You know, you get a play off of that, you know, yeah. And, you know, it isn't perfect. But it's better than the seal coat, you know, I think it provided some really good value.
Good to hear that there.
It was really good to hear that, yeah, it was good to hear that, yeah. Item four is a resolution that is just transferring the balance of those funds appropriated with budget, so. I know every once in a while Chuck would look at and see if there was just a few more dollars that we just transferred, but I think we'll just. Transfer whatever was in the budget.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure we don't transfer more.
No, because it's statutorily. Limited.
Yeah.
As far as, yeah, so and that's what we budgeted was the limit.
Okay.
So those are the right.
These are the budgeted numbers, yeah, these are the budgeted numbers, yeah.
My wish to approve that resolution, item number four.
Second.
Second. Alright, it's a resolution, so is there any further discussion? Let's call a vote, Kyle.
And gravel haul is really well, we had twenty-five trucks last week when we started. And we are done with Hampton as far as we wanted to go, uh. We'll leave a few thousand ton over there for Brandon, and those guys are all short ends. Keeps it, keeps it busy when we get done with the main gravel haul, so, um, we moved to uh. Stratford's pit over by Dennis, someone over there by one of those people, uh, it's called Sparks pit. And uh, so since day one out of there, really good material down in your area.
Actually, I talked to Henry this morning, he was right in the valley by my hog barn. David is going so smooth. He thought the product looked really good.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good, you're, I did, my opinion is some of the best gravel we've gotten. And, you know, there's maybe four or five years of that automatic carrel, uh, small pulling out of there, so. Utilize it long as we can, so. Uh, so that's uh, that's going well, uh, the fiber contractor, we met with them this morning, I, I, I wanna start off by saying. This is a very professional group of people, they, they uh. There's three different, three different producers, yeah, and and so the fundamental issue is. They're using those for your plow with one of their crews down in that area where you're at now. And so they have two dozers pulling each other and the growers tear things up and it just, just tears things up, and so. Yeah, you know, I told him this morning, I said, we, we will in the future prohibit the use of dozers. Follow in fiber cables or any type of cable for that in the, in the future, just because of the issues that were. Basically, they have another crew that's working north of Highway thirty, and they're using like a quad track typical. Vermeer. You know, that we see other contractors use, and we have very, very few issues with that. But we've had some pretty significant issues, you know, but one morning here, several weeks back. You know, we had to dump about twenty loads of crushed limestone on that two hundred and fortieth street down there. A mile and a half of road that had just been plowed in and. So, you know, you. You kind of weigh the, it, it, this isn't everything, I mean, we've had other costs, other gravel and stuff and. You know, we're trying to not, you know. Every little thing, but when you got. Got a big area, you gotta haul it, it's pretty much a direct result of what they did. Um, and we usually bill back for that, you can see, I mean, we got, we got a lot of money here, and of course contractors saying, I'm not eating all that. And I said, well. You weren't the permit holder, Western Iowa Networks is the permit holder. And so, Mike was there, Western Iowa Networks, he seemed to go back and talk to us more, and I said, you're welcome to have some of those people come over and talk to our board, I said, we all have jobs to do. My job is to be a steward of the roadways, looking out for the taxpayers' interest in terms of the roads. You guys are trying to provide fiber to the people out here, they want fiber and they want roads. But here's where we're at. It is, and I said, have we not, i- if we didn't have the, the method, it's the method, and of course, we want, we want the cable place. Right here. Okay, want it right there. And and the reason, and this is kind of the foundation here, we have kind of the road. On our typical road. You know, we, you know, we just assume have right here, you know, plowing it. Out there right now, there's kind of like the wheel track, uh, because then, you know, we can blade the gravel back. They put it in, we blade it back on, you don't even know it there most times. And, you know, so, you know, they're just kind of tearing this up, so, you know, they, they grasp lines over here. And we want that in two or three feet from the grass line, and, you know, because if you got culverts, and they got a horse for all the culverts. Then, you know, we don't want it in here because this is what happens in the ditches. And you gotta come back, you gotta think about how, okay. Long term, this is the best place for it to be because very, very little disturbance, and then if there is any issue with this trench. You know, it's right on the road, so you can, you know, the traffic and lighting then needs that thing back together. And of course, they're saying, well, you're the one, it's, it couldn't be there, and everybody else lets us put it, you know, out here, with, you know, if we get out here too far. You know, where we've had with some of these, it's that the slopes, you know, I mean, if this was like this, you'd put it out in this area. We've had these slopes completely fail, and so we want it in a little bit, you know, we had several slope failures because the utility being. It'd fall right on that trench.
You prefer them to do a trench like that with the.
Yeah, yeah, so, so anyhow, uh. I, I think all, you know, and again, these guys are very good, you can sit down, you can have a professional conversation with them, and nobody's getting.
Paul, does it make a difference that they use a plow versus a trencher?
Well, everybody uses a plow. They're using a plow, you know, the dozer, V-six dozer, and then they're pointing that with another dozer, so you got two sets of grower tracks that are. Pulling on this, and, you know, most, if that's just one crew, if one crew was working down this area, and another crew worked with this area. And they're using the standard that we can normally see, and now, you know, we didn't prohibit that, this particular case, and. I think we'd like to get along, but if it gets, you know, to the point. Where it gets too bad, and they say, hey, you know what, get that thing out of here, we don't want it, we don't want it here. Apparently, they're not having any problems in other counties, but I've heard that for the last four years, you know, they don't do it this way, you know, and so it's like, well. Yeah, but this is what's happening here, we can't deny it, I mean, pictures are there, but they're very good, uh, so. You know, so they're wondering, well, what, you know, you want us to pay a percentage of this, or what are you asking, or is it all of it?
Pardon? Your brief, Tom, you, you explained that.
Oh, yeah, we talked about all of it, yeah, and and so, you know, their argument, again, is we're trying to provide a service to the citizens. Yet, we can't do that and tear up our roads, I mean, you have to be good stewards of the roads, so this is kind of this fine balance, like I said. This isn't all of it. There are a lot of the one-off, the one load here, the this there, whatever that we, you know, this is just main stuff that, you know, the biggest, the biggest.
At the end of the day, we would not have this cost.
Right, if, if they weren't here.
If they weren't here, and I told them, I said, again, and I don't, I don't want to be here having this discussion, but the fact is, we're having this because you are here. Sure, so. But they were pretty good. Yeah, oh, yeah.
So did you talk to all, bring the different companies?
Yeah, everybody was there this morning, we said, we, we.
Cause it seemed like.
They're, they're actually, they're all connected.
Okay.
They're all connected, uh, you know, so the.
Just different names of the company, cause it seemed like, I mean, out of my dad's yesterday, when I ran out there, there, it was a different, it was the MP, I think.
They're all under the MP umbrella, it's MP next level, and there's a vantage point.
Different colored vehicles than what was there when they were doing the actual drilling or putting the line in.
That I can't.
Cause they were all red. Yesterday, and they had a guy running a. Cat, I guess, with the blade down, going backwards off, next to the side of the road.
Back dragging it, trying to work that, trying to work that in, so.
From, you know, Hans's bridge that you guys replaced all the way back. And I hadn't seen him do that before, maybe that's the final thing that.
That is, that's what they're doing, they're trying to, they're trying to. They're trying to touch up that area where they just plow and put the cable in, so. So that's kind of where, you know, I stood my ground, so this is what we need. And the contractor just said, well, I'm not eating all that, and I says, well, you're not the permit holder, they are, and that's Western Iowa Networks. And so they're the ones that are responsible for it, kind of like where you have the management utilities, so I mean, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, I'm sure they had that figured into their bid, I mean, when they moved bid to the state of Iowa, right? You'd guess they're in some sort of contingency.
I, I don't know.
I mean, that's up to them, if they didn't, it's.
It doesn't really make any difference, you know, the point is, the, the point is that if you're tearing up roadways, that goes above and beyond normal usage and. We have a cost and tur- incur, we would expect you to pay for it, and that was made very clear when we, when we had our initial pre-con. And they're only about thirty percent done. Three? Got a big number, that's why we had the conversation now. So not letting this go till the end, we're starting to accumulate some things, there's some concerns, we need to hit it.
Man, that can be a large bill for us if we.
Yeah, yeah, so it wouldn't be out of the question for some, for my text board to come over here and meet with you guys and talk about it.
And unfortunately, I'm guessing that if we run into a dryer spell, it would be as noticeable as we move through the summer.
It'll probably get better.
It'll get better.
Yeah.
I mean, you take that.
Now, we're gonna try to move it up.
Throw moisture in it right away, you got a mess.
Yeah, but. Show you brought some dirt, that rock up from deep. Yeah, it, it's the method, and you know, that would, that would be the next step, is just to say, okay. If you want the permits and you want to continue, you have to get a different operation. Cause you know, this just isn't working, and that's kind of.
Vibratory.
It is, but it's just on a. On a big dozer. Yeah, I mean, Craig, you, you, you've seen them out there, man. So, ever since that thing's been put in the county, it's been a problem.
Yeah, but I know everybody that, that going past their places like.
They're happy to. I know.
Yep.
And I get that. So it's kind of a fine line where you balance the, you know.
But you were upfront with them at the. Any damages to our roadway will be assessed. Because they're getting clients, that's also revenue for them that they'll have in additional years if they could. Used to offset any additional costs they have right now.
Well, uh, and my argument is, you, you, you can't destroy something to provide something, you have to be accountable and, you know. And, I mean, we had the winter, because we had a lot of pavement damage, so they had to pay for it. They do. And they paid for it.
Well, the good news is, is that they are only about thirty percent done, so maybe they can adjust the way that they're doing things to uh not create such.
That's why we met this morning. So, uh, oversight loaded issues, and, um, it's over with, so thank goodness. Um, that is over with.
I did see you, you had made the Iowa DOT Facebook page, so.
I didn't.
Yeah, um, and then the uh UP railroad is gonna start working on crossings at uh. Nelson Park Road and moving east to Vale in the next couple of weeks, so some of those crossings will be closed for four to eight hours at a time, so. They're, they're raising, re-tucking, and it's new asphalt, like, I said, well, that'd be great, people love that, cause crossings. Needs some attention, he said, well, they're only doing one track, so. It's like, okay. So it'll be halfway.
You're gonna have it closed, why not do it the whole time?
Do it all, I don't know, but anyhow. People, and, and they're, they're, they're working like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then they're gonna take seven days off, then come back, so. There could be crossings closed over the weekend, and then, you know, they're to, they're to put up traffic control immediately, in the immediate vicinity of the work. And then they have to go to the nearest intersection to put up a road post sign, so somebody doesn't get up there and try to figure out, how, what do I do? Uh, so that's the required, you know, manual, well, traffic control devices, uh, traffic control. And then they have to contact the center, they're supposed to contact us too, they, you know, on a kind of a daily basis, let us know where they're at, what they're doing. And that's all I have, so if uh anybody gets a chance or wants to take a look, or. Of course, the show might be over by the time you guys get done, so, anyhow.
We are bound to discuss and take action on putting a zoning administrator. Uh, Seth had called that, um, you know, he'd been doing that temporarily. And uh, he just feels that at this time, he would like to concentrate on the uh assessor's position and. Uh, keep working on that, so he called and said that he would like us to appoint some other department.
Did it, Dwayne do it before?
Yep, he just feels that.
Did they, did we pay him an additional fee to do that?
Same as what we're paying, so.
Five thousand dollar.
So we're gonna take five thousand dollars away from his salary then?
Zoning department will just take it.
So who's gonna do it?
Well, that's why we. Those auditors in action.
Are we required to have a zoning administrator?
Probably, yes.
Yeah.
And I, I appreciate the fact that he realizes that takes away from, you know, what they do and uh, you know, with him getting the five thousand. We, we could ask, uh, the, the situation, you know, with that would be. Um, you know, when they're out, then somebody else would be doing that or saying, so, I was, I don't know how we did it in the past, but he just is saying, he would just assume. Uh, they concentrate on the job of the unassessor.
To me, the natural fit is in the assessor's office.
I agree.
Yeah, I know in some counties, and someone in the engineer's office does it.
About that when we appointed him.
Different things like that, I know we, yeah, I went kind of searching in my old, in some of the base camp stuff. Back when you appointed him in January or whenever it was. And, yeah, that was one thing we found.
Well.
So something like the, um, like Ben's type position or problem with the letter in the office also?
Um, I guess the question would be, that comes to my mind.
Go ahead, sorry.
Would be that, could it be to the, the actual office so that one person isn't, isn't getting the five thousand dollars, but yet expecting, expecting your staff to. Help fill in if you're at lunch or whatever, rather than saying, oh, he's not here, we need to come back later, he's on vacation, you need to come back later. Can the zoning give that to the, the?
But you know, you got your zoning.
The role of the zoning administrator?
Administrator is basically, it helps.
Point of contact.
He's the point of contact, and he does the functioning and the, what the zoning board brings on.
Amazing, isn't it?
Oh, did you have that with you?
Yes, I did.
Look at you rock this party. It's an actual, I think it's an individual duty, not necessarily.
Kind of like a weed commissioner.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, that's what's, what it's about, and it's, I said to get it on the agenda, so we can discuss it, figure out what our options are. And he was just doing it, you know, temporarily, kind of like acting until he. You know, his position would be, so I appreciate him coming forward and. So do we, what would be the uh?
Then he.
Where's all that information kept, they basically govern.
Did not mention that, I think that that's part of his. I don't have him on speed dial, but I keep finding him.
Zone, uh, personal residential types of, yeah.
Maps and all that.
I mean, over the city of Dennison, they have their own zoning.
Have planning and zoning, they have a board, don't they?
They do.
I think we just take care of outside of city limits, don't we?
Right. I'm just thinking, probably some. Small counties, it might be all the same person.
I guess Seth has nobody in his office that wants to take it on, ask Paul and see if, like a Ben or a Casey or. I'm obviously, I don't know, there.
I think Ben would probably be your Casey, and then I don't know if that would be in there, we also, I mean, other, they may have a knowledge of it, they may. Probably willing to do it, but.
Yeah. Just a few questions, otherwise, maybe he's.
I mean, cause he's been appointed since, what, January?
January.
So I guess it'd be nice to know. Utilized or used.
Yeah, what has he done since then?
Well, I.
Kind of zoning administrator.
That's why I wanted to get it on the agenda for discussion.
You asked him to come up.
I did, I did.
He was busy, didn't he?
Well, he hasn't gotten back to me yet, I just assume, you know, if he's in the office. Or if I could call him.
By three oh seven, I think is the number in the assessor's office, it's two six three.
Text him on his cell phone or two, so in a way you should communicate. Maybe if the phone rings, I'll actually answer it, how's that?
The one will, potentially.
Eventually.
At least you can use this number anyway, so I'm sure it's still there.
They're working our precinct, actually, Cindy and Karen are out here, and Bonnie's in, it's last week. They're busy. Hopefully.
Are you short?
No, we're not short.
Had to work hard to find where.
Yes, it's a challenge.
Here it comes.
Need to have a steak dinner.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you, Seth. We've had a question.
Running out there.
I know.
Yeah, you said.
Marty, so you know, when you called that, uh, you, uh, wanted to concentrate just on the assessor's job. Has this been a, a busy task for you to keep up with or, uh, who would you recommend?
I don't believe anybody in the office was, um, it's not necessarily overly busy task. Um, but there are different things. Like right now, I'm working on a variance. Um, to put a booster up my slush move.
Okay.
But, no, I don't.
Does it make sense to have the zoning administrator in the assessor's office? Is that where people, point of contact would want to go or?
I kind, I asked, um, our, uh, district at the district meeting and there was only like two other assessors out of the. Fourteen that did zoning in their office.
Okay.
So I would say.
Was doing it then? Was it their own office or?
It varied. I. I mean, I think it varied from the auditor's office to.
Engineer.
Having just the zoning person engineered to, one might have said conservation even. I don't, not sure.
How would we, what would be the avenue to go to find out who's interested? Would we just table this for today and go and talk? And how, what do you guys?
Here, we don't have anybody that's.
Put it down to.
We need to get it on.
We have to have someone agree to do it.
Yeah, talk to Paul and if he thought it would fit into his.
Well, they decided they had questions. I don't know how.
We're just trying to place it in the right spot and get the right person.
Yeah.
How many?
It's interesting, I mean, you're new at this and I just thinking back over the years of working under Dwayne, the zoning administrator, how much? Time on a year. So we gotta go talk to Paul or say, you know, on average, you know, I spend X amount.
Wayne would probably be a better person to ask.
I just didn't.
Yeah.
Time you can keep dedicated towards it.
Put you on the spot.
Maybe average, say hour, two hours a week, week maybe. I, I don't know if that's even all that accurate.
I mean, that can all change if there's.
Absolutely.
A request to rezone a portion of land. I mean, you have to have a zoning commission being. In the city of Dennison has zone, so you don't get involved with anything in the city, right?
Correct. Yeah. So basically the zoning person, we would. Like if it's not in our office, we would just contact them and have them give us the permits like we do for all the cities. I think.
So the zoning person for the city of Dennis.
Uh, Chris. Flattery, yeah.
So for two hours a week, you're going to keep it?
Yeah.
I know I.
You're doing a good job at it. Yeah.
I just want to kind of focus more on just getting the office attack with the assessor's.
We appreciate your honesty on that.
Maybe you're, a year, a couple of years down the road, maybe if it's open again, maybe consider it.
So do you think it would be a bit for the city of Dennison to see if they want to expand and, uh, take care of the whole county? I mean, is anybody think that's.
We know that'd be something we'd have to do on our twenty eighty.
That's a big no for me.
I would say.
But I don't have a vote. I wish.
I think we need to, just before we start looking outside of our, our network, I think we see if Paul's. You know, like I think, I don't see Ben having trouble.
I mean, would you have problems if someone in your office doing it? Or not? Someone else wanted to?
I don't think either want to, um, but I would kind of like our office to learn all our tasks before we.
Can I, uh, is, is some of the issue maybe that you get the five thousand dollars if you're at life, somebody else actually has to kind of get through it? Or is that not been a issue?
Because it's always kind of like building permits, whoever helps the person at the counter just kind of helps some. Uh, but if it was a more difficult thing than that, then zoning, we would get Dwayne and he would come talk to all. That's been me.
Is there new things that you guys are doing that you want to focus on the assessor's duties?
Just training and.
Cause I mean, you guys, you have had experience and Matty's been there.
Yeah, it's just training, get, getting a new person hired and everybody trained. I gotta train people on what I was doing. Because apparently I've been pretty much doing all my stuff, tasks I had before. And now the ones I inherited was to be assessor, so. It's just been a lot. I just.
Wanting to focus on what you do. And so we'll, uh, go forward and talk to somebody.
I'm with you. I think we got the gin house, Paul. Paul's our known. Maybe recess.
I don't know that Paul, I think Paul would give Ben the opportunity to, I mean, it's just me.
Do you want me to go talk to him after the meeting and?
Probably would.
It is temperature on that and bring it back next week.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. I will do that.
Soon as we figure something out, we'll.
Thank you.
I'll do it. All right, that was our last agenda item. Do we have any citizens input? Paul, we always ask you first. Yep, you're it. You're good. Thank you. We have no one on Zoom, so I assume we have no citizen input. Uh, do we have?
I'm a major.
There we go. There we go. All paper, I.
All right.
All right, meeting is adjourned. All right, you may stay all day. It is.
I did that for him.
How's, uh, how's Greg Miller?